I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for Thursday, March 18th, 2021. I would like to read a notice. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity in the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear masks at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The regular meeting scheduled for March 18th, 2021 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written comment, written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted "Public Comment" hyperlink on the Agenda Item Detail. Online comments are available for public review. So I would like to ask now if we could, we will be led in the invocation by Board Member Ware Jackson, and then we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our McKinley High School student who will be introduced after our invocation. Ms. Ware Jackson?
Please rise. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for your presence. We thank you for your gracious favor over the East Baton Rouge Parish school system, and we ask you for a continued hedge of protection around our students, our teachers and administrators throughout the semester, especially through testing time. Lord, give our children and teachers clarity, good understanding, and a sense of peace through testing, Lord. We ask you to bless our work this evening and help us to keep children first in every decision. We pray for divine wisdom and understanding as we make decisions for the school district, and we ask you to cover us. Cover us all, Lord, in safety as we travel home tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Koppel.
Good afternoon. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Koppel, the Senior Army Instructor from McKinley Senior High School, home of the Panthers. As much as I enjoy teaching, there's nothing more that I like than to take an opportunity to really highlight one of our outstanding students, and tonight I have that opportunity. Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Cadet First Lieutenant Leila Collins. She's a sophomore at McKinley Senior High School and will soon complete her second year as JRTC cadet. She's the daughter of Ms. Geneva Banks, a school, excuse me, a preschool teacher in the Baton Rouge area. I'm proud to share with you that Leila is the East Baton Rouge Let Two Cadet of the Year. While at McKinley Senior High School, she has led, she has held multiple leadership positions, both in JRTC, from squad leader to battalion supply officer, and is currently the president of the Beta Club. Dedicated to her studies and self-improvement while at McKinley, Cadet Collins continues to seek personal and professional development. She has a grade point average of 4.125 while enrolled in AP courses, and last year she attained a mastery level in English LEAP test. She also achieved an ACT score of 19 as a first semester sophomore. She has, she was selected to attend an internship through the College of Engineering at LSU this summer. Leila is a member of our state championship Panther Drill Team and a co-captain of the Panther Raider Team. She is a model cadet who has taken on the challenges of living up to the Junior ROTC Cadet Creed and the Army Values. Upon graduation, Cadet Collins plans to attend Southern University and study mechanical engineering. After sharing all of this, I have found some of the most endearing qualities about Cadet Collins includes the consistency of her high character, integrity, emotional governance, responsibility, ambition, and maturity. So without further ado, I have the honor of introducing Cadet First Lieutenant Leila Collins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hang on, Cadet Collins.
Wait right there.
We got Collins on behalf of our senior candidate, Dr. Narcisse, and our retire board, and I'm so Panther proud.
Thank you so much for being here. We move on to item B2, roll call. Madam Secretary?
District Nine, President Tatman.
Present.
District Four, Vice President Collins. District One, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District Two, Mr. Lannis. District Three, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District Five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District Six, Ms. Dyson. District Seven, Mr. Gode. District Eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
We have a quorum. We move now to item C1, Meeting Minutes. Approval of the school board minutes of the February 18th, 2021, regular board meeting and the March 4th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting as published in the Official Journal, moved by Mr. Howard, seconded by Ms. Bernard. Seeing no questions or comments from the board, we will go to the audience. This is for the meeting minutes. Any comments on the minutes? See, seeing none, we move back to the board. Board is clear. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote.
Yeah, roll call vote.
District One, Mr. Blue. District Three, Mr. Howard. District Five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District Eight, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District Nine, President Tatman.
Yes. The minutes are approved, if my vote count is correct. Okay. We move now to recognitions. Item D1, recognition of Westdale Middle School's volleyball team for winning the 2020-2021 East Baton Rouge Parish School System Middle School Volleyball Championship. Ms. Williamson.
Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Superintendent Narcisse, and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to recognize three outstanding middle school teams for winning this year's volleyball, girls and boys basketball championships in EBR, and also Liberty High for being the state runner-up. Before I introduce the middle school teams, I would like to thank the parents for all their support in making, helping making sports such a success in EB, in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. I would also like to thank the principals from these schools, Mr. Franklin from CSAL, Mr. Sinclair from Scotlandville Middle, Ms. Greer from Westdale Middle, and Mr. Lavantino from Liberty for their attendance and support. What can I say about Coach Hill and the Lady Hawks? I congratulate them for being named the EBR Parish School System Middle School Volleyball Champions this year. Under the direction of Coach Hill, the Lady Hawks have won nine out of 11 championships. Out of these nine, Coach Hill and the Lady Hawks have won eight consecutive times, and that's, that's hard to do. The Lady Hawks have three players with an overall GPA of 4.0 and four players with a 3.75. That's another accomplishment in itself. Congratulations, Coach Hill and the Lady Hawks.
Congratulations, Coach Hill.
Right here, someone's going to give medals?
Yes, we've got some medals coming.
Ms. Jackson's coming, sorry.
Sido, that blue bag, I think is for...
Please switch your mask back on.
We can take one outside without.
Next, I would like to introduce Coach Washington and the Scotlandville Middle Stallions. Congratulations goes to Scotlandville Middle for winning the East Baton Rouge Parish CW Allen Middle School Boys Parish Championship. This is their first championship under Coach, under the direction of Coach Washington, and he's done an outstanding job. They were also undefeated in district play, and that's a hard task to win. So we congratulate the Scotlandville Stallions, and their overall GPA is a 3.0 for the team.
Wow.
Congratulations.
On, on behalf of the superintendent and the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, we just want to say congratulations to you guys. I was able to see that championship game. You guys did a great job. You fought through adversity and made it happen. I was worried at first, but you made it happen. So congratulations on behalf of the board and the superintendent.
Next, I would ask the Community School for Apprenticeship Learning, CSAL, to come in, please. CSAL Lady Wolverines won the EBR PSS CW Allen Middle School Girls Parish Championship this year. This is CSAL's first championship under the direction of Coach Lawless. This is the fifth championship for Coach Lawless in the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. The CSAL Lady Wolverines have an overall GPA of 3.1. Congratulations for a job well done.
On behalf of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the superintendent, congratulations. Wonderful game as well with you guys. I was there, able to witness that as well. Keep up the great work, and congratulations.
Next, I would like to introduce the Liberty High Lady Patriots. They're on their way, I promise. Okay, I'll, I'll start my introduction while they're walking in. The Liberty High Lady Patriots had a very successful season, and I've been up every year, I believe, for the past five years. The Lady Patriots went 25 and 7 this year and have won District 64A for five years in a row. Not many schools can say that. Congratulations. Since being hired at Liberty five years ago, Coach Wilson, her coaching staff, and players have had a cumulative record of 152 wins and 27 losses. In Coach Wilson's five years at Liberty, the team has made it to the semifinals in 2017, the finals in 2018, state champions in 2019, state champions in 2020, and runner-up in 2021. And I witnessed that game, and it was an incredible game. Not only are they talented on the court, but in the classroom as well. Madison Williams and Haley Franklin both received the honor of being named Academic All-State with a cumulative GPA of 3.86. Raise your hand, y'all two. Congratulations. Liberty's overall GPA is 3.2. I'm proud to recognize the Liberty High Lady Patriots as this year's 2021 All-State Sugar Bowl LHSAA Girls State Runner-Up for the Vision Two. Congratulations.
On behalf of the superintendent, I want to congratulate Liberty High. I know the seniors probably have a bunch of these medals already, but we've got some more for you to add to your collection.
Again, congratulations, Liberty High Lady Patriots. Congratulations on your successful seasons, all, all four teams, and I look forward to watching you play in one of our EBR schools at the next level next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Great job, everybody, coaches, students, families. You taking credit for all that, Dr. Narcisse?
I'll take it.
Okay, we move to item number five, 2021 Counselors of the Year. Recognition of the Elementary, Middle, and High School Counselors of the Year and the Newcomer of the Year Counselor. Ms. Brazier.
Good evening, Board President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Board Members, and Superintendent Narcisse. I'm Tiaza Brazier, Director of Counseling and Guidance. It is my pleasure to present to you and the community the 2020-2021 School Counselors of the Year. The Elementary School Counselor of the Year is presently a school counselor at Westdale Heights Academic Magnet. This is her eighth year as school counselor, fourth year in the district. She has a master's in counseling and is a licensed professional counselor, and she is nationally board certified. I present to you Carrie Overstreet, Elementary School Counselor of the Year, Westdale Heights Academic Magnet School. Oaks Magnet High School. This is her eighth year as school counselor and her 19th year in the district. She has a master's in counseling and social work and is a registered social worker. I present to you Ebonyce Murray, Middle School Counselor of the Year, Glen Oaks Magnet High School.
Next, I present to, the High School Counselor of the Year is presently a school counselor at Tara High School. This is her fifth year as a school counselor and her fifth year in the district. She has a master's in education and administration and mental health counseling. I present to you Latanya Dillon, High School Counselor of the Year, Tara High School. And finally, certainly, last but not least, the Newcomer School Counselor of the Year is a school counselor at Baton Rouge Magnet High School. This is her second and a half year as school counselor and her second and a half year in the district. She has a master's in education, school counseling, and she is provisionally licensed and nationally board certified. I present to you Erica Levay, Newcomer Counselor of the Year, Baton Rouge Magnet High School.
Thank you all so much. We move now to item number six, Line for Line. Recognition of the collaboration with Line for Line and the East Baton Rouge Parish Public Libraries to provide every elementary school with 40 books curated and donated by the Conscious Kid nonprofit. These titles are focused on and celebrate diversity. Ms. Goche.
Yes. Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Superintendent Narcisse, and members of the board. As Library Services Director, it gives me great pleasure to share with you a community project for our elementary schools. Members of Line for Line organization and EBR Parish Libraries teamed up with us to provide a collection of diverse books curated and donated by the Conscious Kid nonprofit. These books focus on different skin colors, different cultures, and even different families. Now, you heard me say differences, but the message in each book is that different is beautiful. We didn't stop at only obtaining books. We, the books were hand-delivered to every elementary school. We held nine different reading events, and a shout-out to Board Members Colin, Howard, and Bernard for participating on those days. We also are providing reading challenges. We have one going on right now, and the students can win a book for their own to keep. Today, we had an online event where students could connect with the author and illustrator of I Am Every Good Thing. I think it's a part of my job to carry around a book, so I do have it. Check that off. The students were so excited. We had over 50 classrooms log in, and they were able to share and tell their experiences. I can only describe this collaboration as a good thing. I'm going to use a couple of sentences in the book just to kind of describe to you what this collaboration has been. The collaboration has been every good thing that makes the world go around. You know, like gravity or the glow of moonbeams over a field of brand-new snow. This collaboration is good to the core like the center of a cinnamon roll. Yeah, that good. Now, unfortunately, Lucy Pereira is caught in traffic, so we were texting back and forth, but you haven't seen the last of this collaboration. We're already working on another fun reading event, and as I said, Lucy Pereira, who's with Line for Line, would be here, and as I said, she is a part of that cinnamon roll center goodness. And so I would like to do a shout-out for Line for Line and EBRPL for this, this collaboration.
Thank you so much. We move now to item number seven, VIPS Partners in Education. Recognition of the VIPS Partners in Education for the month of March. LSU Ogden Honors College, Ms. Simmons.
Good afternoon, everyone. Superintendent Narcisse, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, and members of the board. I am here today to present our March Partner in Education, representing the LSU Ogden Honors College. We have Sanaa Alam, and Ravati Menon is also the second student that partnered with her for this special project, which has been ongoing beginning in 2020 summer. We've been contacted by the LSU Ogden Honors College to work with them on developing a grant to serve an underserved body of students, and the Ogden Honors College offers a select group of students an opportunity to write a grant for a $5,000 reward for a project that they designed to serve the community, and they previously had a relationship with VIPS, and she can tell you more about that. But just in general overview, we developed this program, which... which was already a concept that we were... I was pondering on with Highlights Magazine. If anyone can remember the nostalgic experience working with Highlights Magazine, maybe in the dentist's office or the doctor's office as a kid. So the idea was to reward the students at Park Elementary, which was a school that was selected totaling about two hundred seventy students. Each of those students received a nine-month subscription to Highlights Magazine, which are being sent directly to their homes, which fulfills one of the many missions of VIPS literacy efforts to have age-appropriate material in as many households in East Baton Rouge Parish Public School System. So now I will tell you a little bit more about how that process occurred.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for... I'm just standing on my toes. Thank you for having me. I'm honored to speak about this project and this partnership between the LSU Honors College and volunteer in public schools. So to give a little background about the project, I actually had volunteered with VIPS since the beginning of my college experience as a reading buddy. So every week, I would go to an elementary school and read for thirty minutes with a first grader. And my partner, co-director Brava Menon, also would do the same with me. And that experience really taught us the importance of improving educational resources for low-income schools, as well as the importance of having this student-mentor relationship for students to promote a love for reading and increase their confidence in reading. And oftentimes, we found that, I think, students didn't have a lot of books at home or someone to read with at home. And so we wanted to think of a way to improve the resources that they had, as well as people to read with them. So that's kind of how the idea came to life. And then when the Ogden Leaders Program Award was promoted to us, we thought, you know, what can we do with this $5,000 to really improve the educational opportunities for these low-income students? So I realized that we couldn't do it alone. We really wanted to partner with someone in the community who knew what the real need was and knew how to connect with the school and really make this the most effective spending of the money as possible. So because of our experience with VIPS, we reached out to Kaia, and she was absolutely amazing. She recommended immediately that we purchase a subscription to Highlights Magazine for every student at an under-resourced school. And so we ended up choosing Park Elementary here in Baton Rouge. And she was able to connect with the principal, Principal Stephanie Tate, who was really great and eager to work with us to really get this project, you know, make it come into fruition. So that happened, actually, right at the start of COVID when, you know, before the idea was to take these magazines and bring them into the school and have volunteers from the Honors College come and lead some activities from the magazine every month. But we had to obviously adjust when the pandemic hit. So we ended up being able to send the magazines directly to the students' homes. And then we also have now established a virtual volunteering program every month on Google Meet. So we currently have fifteen or so volunteers that meet every month with these students in their classrooms, virtually, and go through activities from the magazines, read them stories, have fun activities. And I just love seeing how excited the students are during the volunteer sessions. And our goal is really to have the students associate that positive experience with the magazine at home so that when they see it, they are excited to read and they have a love for reading and they really enjoy it. So I think our project has done that, and we couldn't have done it without the partnership with VIPS. So thank you to Kaia and VIPS for all of their help.
We're so excited to have this partnership, as you can tell. But thank you so much for being so persistent. They've been so organized and enthusiastic throughout this whole process, so we appreciate you as well.
Thank you.
On behalf of Superintendent Narcisse and the School Board, I'd like to present you with this. And with such high academicness coming from the Honors College, I hope you consider education as a career.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We move now to item E Information Only-E1 Monthly Financial Report. We also have for Information Only Personnel Changes. Any questions or comment on any of those items from the Board? Let me give you a second. Very good. Everybody looks good. We move now to item F1, Update from the Superintendent, Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you, President Tatman. What a great week we had for school outside of the blimp of the weather. There's been... However, there have been a lot of great things happening in our schools. NFL running back and former LSU star Clyde Edwards-Helaire is scheduled to visit Twin Oaks Elementary Friday as a special guest speaker for the school's Young Men of Character Program. The Young Men of Character Club focuses on teaching young men humility, responsibility, determination, integrity, and initiate self-confidence and other foundations of success. Congratulations also to the following school counselors on being selected as the 2020-2021 East Baton Rouge Parish School System School Counselors of the Year. As you saw them today, Carrie Overstreet, Ebeneus Murray from Glen Oaks, Latanya Dillon from Tara High School, and Erica LeVette from Baton Rouge Magnet High School. And Carrie Overstreet was from Westdale Heights Academic Magnet Elementary School. It's always good to see our counselors and our staff doing great work with our children in the city. The Communications Department launched the One Hundred Day Plan Progress Tracking Page on the district's website so that the community can see how far we have come in our progress and work towards the accomplishment of my entry goals. A few highlights of our Hundred Day Plan initiatives included school site visits, getting out to Northeast Elementary, Northeast High School, South Downs Pre-K Center, Glasgow Middle, and Highland Elementary Schools, as well as Westdale Heights Elementary Aquinas Lab, which I saw students do really great work there. The first-ever Student Advisory Council met last Tuesday, and student representatives from districts across all our high schools demonstrated exceptional thoughtfulness and investment in the success of our schools. They were very engaged, and they also shared a lot of their perspectives and opinion about the work that we're doing. And so we're just excited to get student voice as a part of our process. I was also the guest speaker for the Baton Rouge Area Commerce Monthly Business Webinar. This event provided me with an opportunity to share with business leaders the district's vision for expanding career pathways for our students, which culminate in the awarding of an industry certification and/or credit hours towards a higher education degree. As we think about our work moving in the future, we're just super excited that we begin to connect our students with jobs and availability of progress here in our city. The district was notified on Wednesday, March tenth, that we were selected as one of the eight recipients of the $50,000 Fast Forward Grant. The Fast Forward Grant will allow us to develop and pilot dual-degree programs. These programs will allow students to earn either a Jumpstart TOPS Tech Career Diploma or a TOPS University Diploma while duly earning an Associate's Degree or participating in a Louisiana Workforce Commission Recognized Pre-Aprentice and Apprenticeships Programs that either prepare graduates for career or continuing post-secondary education. As we move forward in our work, it's important that we begin to think about how students who are getting their high school degrees also have great opportunity getting their Associate's Degree into pathways and jobs for the future. And we're truly excited about receiving that grant from the state. President Tatman, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. I don't see any questions or comments. There you go, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Dr. Narcisse. I just have two questions, I guess. First, thank you for putting together that Student Advisory Council. I think that is necessary and long overdue. So I appreciate that. But during the last meeting, I asked about the COVID relief numbers. And I still just want to, A, ask for an update on that as we get ready to receive our new money to understand, like, kind of where we're thinking about priorities as we get this new package for the American Rescue Plan. So if we have any updates around the COVID relief funding and what we're thinking about for the new funding, that would be helpful.
So I missed your question.
So my question is, so I didn't receive the numbers from the information that I requested during the last meeting. It related to the COVID release, the old money. So I was just wondering, A, when could we expect that information? And then, B, if we could get some insight on what we're thinking about as we get this new amount of dollars coming in for our COVID relief package?
Yes, thank you for that question. We do plan on presenting to the Board in the April Board Meeting the how we'll be using our CARES Act dollars. Currently, right now, there are a couple of possibilities of things we've been thinking about. One has been to think about how we could provide more parent liaisons in schools. Also, we have been looking at how do we look at our universal pre-K? Where are we looking at pre-K for schools? Or starting, jump-starting that in schools? The other part we've been looking at also is the possibility of providing more social worker and nurses for more wraparound services to support kids in schools. And then the last component that we've been thinking about also is around our literacy work. As you know, we are... One of our challenges and gaps we have to close is we have a reading loss among our students, as well as just a learning loss, as you would hear. We've been thinking about what are some ways that we could provide support to teachers in schools in putting literacy coaches, as well as providing resources to teachers to be able to do that work. That's currently where we are in terms of how we're thinking about our CARE dollars right now.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Seeing none. We move now to Presentations, G1, Update from Finance. Ms. Lopez.
Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Dr. Narcisse, and School Board Members. My name is Kelly Lopez from the Finance Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present the February 2021 Monthly Financials. The monthly financial review is an opportunity for the Board to see at a single point where the different funds are. It will also give the Board an opportunity to see what each of the funds spends their money on and how they receive their monies. The General Fund has a current balance of $46 million. This is an increase of 21.9 from January of 2021. Proposition 1 has a current balance of $10 million. This is an increase of 3.3 million from January of 2021. Proposition 2 has a current balance of a negative $232,000. This is an increase of 8,000 from January. Proposition 3 has a current balance of a negative 3.2 million, and this is an increase of 36,000 from January 2021. The propositions are driven by COVID-19 budgeting and decreased sales tax. When we discuss the funds with you, it is important that you know where each of the funds receives a majority of their funding. Let's start with the General Fund. The majority of the General Fund comes from Ad Valorem, our property taxes, MFP, which is the state funding firm that Louisiana Department of Ed, and sales tax. The next slide shows the major expenditures from the General Fund. The General Fund's major expenditures are salary and benefits, which make up 64%, charter school payments, and property services. All propositions are funded through the voter-approved Tax Plan of 2018. 100% of the revenues from the propositions is received from sales tax or the interest from the investment of the sales tax proceeds. 78% of Proposition 1 expenditures are property services. This is to be expected as this is the funding source for the facilities of the district. 93% of Proposition 2 expenditures are salaries and benefits for our alternative school programs. And Proposition 3 expenditures are salaries and benefits. The two major federal grants within the system are Title I and USDA. Both of these grants are federally funded. State sources and local sources also make up the rest of our grant funding. The district has a Disaster Relief Fund that is funded by FEMA Daughters, which are also federal. And the district grants are on a reimbursement basis. The funds must be expended and the items received in order to receive payments for the items. The reimbursements are typically on a six-to-eight-week turnaround timeline. The Child Attrition Program has a current balance of a negative $4.9 million. This is an increase of 2.8 from January of 2021. Non-major grants have a current balance of $18.4 million. This is a decrease of $900,000 from January of 2021. As the school year begins to end, the district will finish the remaining funding for the fiscal year. Title I has a current balance of negative 3.4 million. This is a decrease of 71,000 from January of 2021. Again, like all grants, we are completing the fiscal year to ensure the district receives all funding available. Major expenditures that grants cover for the district are salaries, benefits, professional services, and materials and supplies. The Grant Department is working diligently to ensure that we receive reimbursements from all of our sources. Our next steps are the revised budget will come to Board approval in May of 2021, and the proposed 21-22 budget will come to Board approval in June. This timeline lays out the various key achievable points of the budget cycle for your review. Any questions?
I do, but anybody else have any questions? Yes, so Mr. Goday.
Yes, and first, thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is bringing us much more information. If you could go back to the slides where you had the budget, the balances on the Prop 1, 2, and 3?
Third slide.
Okay, when you say balance, balance in there, is that the balance in the fund? Or is that the balance, the...
For the fiscal year.
For the fiscal year, okay.
Correct. I've taken, this is what we've collected, this is what we've expended, this is what we have at this moment. No, they do have fund balances, absolutely. This is just what is ongoing in that snapshot from July to February. And remember, February sales tax isn't even in there. We got that 45 days, so...
Understand.
Sure, sure. No, no, we have fund balances.
Well, when I saw balance, I didn't, you know... So you might want to use a different term than balance.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. But again, thank you very much. It's very informative, and I really like having the information.
That was my question.
Okay.
Mike, again, Mike beat me to the punch. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
And now we'll move to item G2, Facilities Update. Ms. Anderson, Mr. Williams.
Hello. I am Judith Anderson, newly transitioning in the role of Program Director for CIS or as Tillage for Marcus Williams. And today, we're coming in with a high-level overview of a capacity study that we've been engaged in for you all. So we'll jump right in and talk about what a capacity study really is. A fact-based study to map out how to best utilize and locate existing and new facilities. It'll outline current usage and functional capacity. We will account for the school's capacities, their locations, the feeder patterns, demographics, facilities and site conditions, and operational costs. This will aid the district in how to best utilize and optimize existing facilities and properties to grow into the future. So it's just some highlighted things. It goes into the efficiencies of it. Again, the student enrollment, space utilization, planning, and operational costs. Phase 1 of this study will bring in data collection. So it's just gathering current school enrollments that's accounting for pre-COVID and post. Number of the schools needed to support enrollment and academic program offerings. Recommended addition of schools if needed. Confirming the grade configurations at each school that's existing and proposed. Looking at the enrollment of each individual school. Suggested improvements for the school facilities and the sites. And then a budget to go along with that. So compiling all of that will really kind of outline a plan for you all to make informed decisions of how to best utilize your facilities for academic programming for our EBR community. Once we move from that Phase 1, it's kind of... It's broken up into three phases. We are... The capacity study is a part of that Phase 1. And like I say, right now, we're in the midst of collecting all of the data. So next steps will be to collaborate with everyone, bring in that information, talk... about it, and establish the direction that we want to move into. From there, we'll generate the final format and present the findings for consideration. And again, this will go into what will become a overall strategic plan. And so our part is the Phase 1 capacity study, and I'll kind of turn it over to Marcus to elaborate or go into any other detail.
Yeah, I think what I wanted to just say for the audience is just give a little background of, you know, our involvement with the school district and CSRS Tillage and our intimate knowledge of the existing facilities that are there, the updates and improvements that have been done at each site over the years, and what's been planned so far to date with the current tax plan. So, you know, that gives us some intimate knowledge of the existing facilities and what's available, what's out there, and what recommendations we could intertwine into this study as to, you know, to help you guys go forward with the overall strategic plan.
Mr. Goday.
I'm going to be stretching out the meeting here, I'm sorry. But just a quick request. As you go through this, would you please make sure that all vacant land and all closed facilities are included in the listings? Because we tend to forget about those. I know we have a lot of vacant land in our system, and we also have schools like Arlington and things like that that have been closed. So I would like for us not to overlook those as we go through this, particularly since it's going to be part of what rolls into the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Mr. Baloo.
Thank you, and it's similar to Mr. Goday's question. And as you go through, if any schools are near capacity, if you could comment as to whether there's room for expansion onsite, or how easily a school could be expanded. I know, for instance, Broadmoor Elementary, when it was built, I believe it was built in such a way that it could be easily expanded if necessary. That'd be just an example. Or, like Mr. Goday said, if there's room for expansion land-wise around the school. I know there's some schools that we just simply have no room to expand, so that's my only request. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baloo. Ms. Ware Jackson.
Turned it off. Thank you, President Tatman. Mr. Baloo brought something to mind about Flame as you're looking at properties. I think Flame initially had a couple of different plans and different phases, and there's an upstairs element there where there's, I can't tell you how many square feet, but it's a ridiculous amount of square footage that's upstairs on both sides of the building, and I'm wondering if you'd take a look at that and consider those things as we're looking at the facilities. And I don't know, you know, why that part of the building was not improved when we did the improvements back when we first used it, first used it for Baton Rouge High as a swing space, but that whole upper level has hundreds of square footage, and I'm wondering if we can use that space. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Any other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Narcisse.
Just wanted to remind the board that our goal will be to align the facilities plan with our budget, as well as our strategic plan, all in June, so it all connects as we ask these questions, as we think through our programmatic pieces as all these things are aligned. Thank you, President Tatman.
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Williams, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. -- oh, he goes coming up now, I'm sorry. I'm wrong. Again, Ms. Dyson.
Thank you. So the demographic study was done, and it's been a while. And so then the census was done, and we don't have the results of it. And since the census has been completed, I'm seeing just continued development, just continued development out in the southeast area of our district. And so I'm wondering if you can get with the city parish and get a more up-to-date idea of all of the new properties, new subdivisions that are coming, just on a weekly basis, and kind of get a better snapshot of where we are in the area, because it's huge. And I just feel like the data is just getting old so quickly. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you all. We move now to Item H1, Reports from Board Appointees to Committee Agencies. Does anyone have a report for their appointment? Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Tatman. I wanted to let everyone in the listening audience, viewing audience, know that registration for summer camps for BRECC begins on March 20th at 9:00 a.m. I know that people in this parish and the surrounding parishes are very excited about the opportunities for their young people to attend summer camps this summer in light of the 2020 COVID pandemic. So it opens on the BRECC website. You can go to brecc.org. Also, BRECC is hiring for the summer camps, and they love to hire teachers. So you have to be 18 years old, and again, you can go to the BRECC website. And I have a playbook in front of every board member. I hope that you, when you're out and about in the community, you will remind parents in your areas and people that you come across that they're hiring for summer positions. You have to be 18 and above, and that we're opening enrollment for BRECC on the 20th of March. I'm very, very excited about being able to say that because after last year. So it means we're all moving forward in progress in the pandemic. Thanks, Mr. Tatman.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Appreciate that. Any other reports from board members and community agencies? Seeing none, we move now to the Consent Agenda. Mr. Goday.
Thank you, President Tatman. The following items will be approved as part of the consent agenda. The items, following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Two, naming the Capital Middle School Gymnasium the Louis T. Bonds Gymnasium. Consideration of request to name the Capital Middle School Gymnasium as the Louis T. Bonds Gymnasium. Three, Health Benefits Consultant. Consideration of request authorizing the superintendent and general counsel to negotiate and execute a contract with Gallagher as the Health Benefits Consultant for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Number four, the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Consideration of request for the approval of the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Five, Memorandum of Understanding Southern University. Consideration of request for the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the Southern University 1890 JAG-STAR Scholarship Program. Item six, Professional Services Contract. Third-party evaluator. Consideration of request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Charter School Consultants LLC in the amount of $2,300 per charter school application received by the state deadline for third-party evaluation services. Seven, Litigation. Consideration of request for the approval of the recommendation from Glenn Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Public Schools, in the matter of ISIS right individually and as natural and/or legal tut tricks for a minor child, name redacted, versus East Baton Rouge Public School Board, suit number 626254, Section 22, 19th Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, and to provide for related matters. This is the end of the consent agenda, and I so move.
Moved by Mr. Goday, seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson. Does any board member wish to pull an item? Ms. Dyson.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number three.
Ms. Ware Jackson.
I would like to pull item two, but only if Big Brown is here, or if Dr. Jackson is here from Capital. And I'm not sure. Mr. Munson, do you know? Are they? They're not? Okay, okay. Well, don't pull it then. Okay, thank you.
Any board member wish to pull any other item? We got right now, number three is being pulled. Seeing none, and seeing no comments from the board on the consent agenda, minus item three. We now go to the public for any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Nope. Seeing no movement in the public, coming back to the board, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Tatman. I would just like to congratulate Mr. Louis T. Bonds for all the respect and just the love from the community that we've seen during the time that we spoke about the renaming of Capital Middle School's gymnasium. There was a gentleman present that we call Big Brown, and he spoke about how Mr. Bonds really, really impressed in his life and really made a huge impression upon his life as a middle schooler, along with so many of his colleagues. And they were the ones who requested the honor that the name be placed at Capital Middle School's gymnasium in honor of Mr. Louis T. Bonds. So I wholeheartedly support this effort and want to congratulate him and his family. He couldn't be here this evening due to a medical procedure he had today, so I just want to make sure that his family knows how much we appreciate him and how much the community appreciates the work that he put into his career, and especially the impact that he made on so many lives of children in that Gus Young area around Capital Middle School. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson, for those comments. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, Madam Secretary, will you please conduct the vote?
Please vote.
You can do roll call.
Ms. Dyson, can you vote? The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to item number three. Consideration for request authorizing the superintendent and general counsel to negotiate and execute a contract with Gallagher as the Health Benefits Consultant for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Moved by Ms. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Howard. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we go to the audience on Item 3, Health Benefits Consultants. Are there any comments from the audience? Nope. We come back to the board. Seeing no comments or question, the board is clear. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote. Oh, somebody? Oh, I'm sorry you're not showing up on my board. Jill, you want to speak?
Yes. I just wanted to recuse myself from this vote, please.
Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
The motion carries, thank you. We now move to organizational items. Ms. Bernard.
Announcement of meetings. School Naming Committee meeting, public forum, to be held March 25th, 2021, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McKinley High School. Some or all board members may attend. Committee of the whole to be held April 15th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. Board retreat to be held April 16th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. at a place to be determined. Regular board meeting to be held on April 22nd, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. And that's all. And I move adjournment.
Thank you. I do want to point out that it's 6:07, and we had a lot of acknowledgements, and we're almost out, so I will accept Ms. Bernard's motion to adjourn.
I think that's a rec.